In a, in a bad way.
Right.
It, it's a little misleading to say, to say the, 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 um, compensation's one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. If the minute you say yes, there's a five percent raise on top of it.
Right.
You're actually starting at, at one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars plus five, five percent.
And, and likewise, and the reason why it's written that way is because his current contract is essentially written that way. So tomorrow, or July one, he's going to be getting a five percent increase on his current salary. So it's just, and again, this is all just about trying to keep things consistent for everybody so that when we, when we're asking, when we're asked about him, we can say with a straight face that, yeah, everybody's about the same. And so everybody gets the raises at the same time, everybody starts out at the same, at the, at the same level, or roughly the same level.
Okay, I, I, I made my point. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused too, and I've got some questions. So it says he's going from a management services director to an airport executive director. So he's still a director, but he's going from one department and, which used to oversee the airport, but now he's solely focusing on the airport. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, my other question is, how many assistant city managers do we have?
Uh, in the organization right now, we have two, and we, and we are proposing to stay at two. So one is, would be, if I can just use names, I'll use Mike Chambliss and Brett Miller. Those are, those are the two that, if there's a prolonged leave of absence by me or vacation, those are the two that we usually assign to do that in, in the event that I'm gone.
All right. And then, yeah, I'm just confused because his contract was not set to expire. Uh, I think it just got renewed right before we came on. So I'm just wondering why we're creating a whole new contract. And I think you talked a little bit about that, but if we could probably further that discussion at some point in time. Cause, cause it says here, "The city needs Mr. Chambliss to have the ability to focus on major improvement projects and the future economic development potential at the airport." But I'm, I'm guessing he was already doing that as part of his old job description, correct?
Yeah, but, but as you can imagine, I mean, you, you see him out and about doing, you know, a lot of other things as well. So, I mean, when you're taking the entire yard and doing parks, et cetera, I mean, we just finished the, um, Mike will tell you that he's been spending a lot of time at McCarthy Park as we're start, starting to finish that up. Um, and, and so the idea again is, is that I, we as the, uh, community, if we want the airport to succeed, I think this is the best place for him to be to succeed and make sure that that operation is successful. And I will also say, not that this is, not, not that this is a reason to or not to approve, but keep in mind, the airport runs as an, as an enterprise zone. This is not necessarily a hit on the general fund. The money that's made at the airport is, all stays at the airport. So if Mike's not successful and, and as the economy turns or whatever, then yes, adjustments do need to be made. There's no question. Um, but I think that, I, like I said, I think right now, given the stuff that we have going on at the airport, it, it's, it is important.
But by moving him to the airport, there may be a financial impact because we may need to hire a new director to fill the shoes of the position he's leaving.
If, i- i- at least initially, the, the intent for me would just to put somebody in the interim. So there wouldn't be a huge cost increase for doing that. No, we're not gonna go and hire, I'm not suggesting that we go out and hire a new community services director or somebody, a yard superintendent, whatever the magic title is that we come up with out at the yard. That's not necessarily my intent. That's not part of this here.
And lastly, I would just say that I would definitely support what the vice mayor is saying. And I'm, I don't have any reservations about holding off a little bit and exploring the severance package and the increase that he was asking about. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lenore?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Well, we always talk about, we want to have competitive wage to get those good people here. I worked with Mike, so I have a little more insight than, than maybe the rest of the council. They're indeed at-will employees. Times get tough, you can reorganize, you can lay off. We already know this. We want to be competitive so that we get the quality executive directors here. The problem is, is we've gotten spoiled with people running multiple departments. It wasn't like that before. Time got tough, time got tough, money's got short, so we had to do that. I don't think it's reasonable to expect that somebody's gonna run the whole airport and the whole public works, where I also worked. So I know about, there's a lot of work at public works. It was good. He's been the biggest money saver in salaries since, since he got here. This man works hard, and he finishes stuff he starts. He's good. This is the kind of employee that you want to retain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Okay. As I said earlier, my concern is performance review. We haven't had a discussion about that. This is a very important position. We all, I think we all agree on that. I have an issue with the five percent increase per year. I've made that clear in the past. And I would like to have more time to go through some of the things that were brought up as far as the severance package and a little more time to see what is reasonable, what is fair.
One more comment?
So is that, Councilmember Lenore?
He's gonna get the five percent July first, so what's the difference?
Yeah, different, different position.
Either way you cut it, he's gonna get the five percent on July first. whichever job you put him in. So there's no, there's no point to that.
Okay, is there, is there a motion or is there any more comments?
Well, I'll make a motion in lack of one. I, I would like to make a motion to bring this back on a date certain. I don't want to let it hang up. I think I've, since I'm making a motion, um, the purpose of bringing it back on a date certain is to give the HR a chance to put together a little package for us as soon as we get back. I hope that we can take a look at and, and, and make a decision. I do not have a, I'm not doing this, so I want, I want to say this as part of my motion. Uh, the, the purpose of this is, is to review all the information available and make sure that we have it all documented and, and then, and then make a, make an evaluation. That's my motion.
Do you have a date in mind, sir?
Well, it, it would have to be a date certain, when, when are we meeting again, in August?
The fifth.
And the second meeting?
Nineteenth.
I believe the second meeting would be better because there are other members here who have other things they want to bring up. And therefore, if we do it the day we come back, I don't think we'll have time to discuss it between us here in the public eye.
Okay. That is your motion?
That is my motion.
I believe with the items that city manager had mentioned also, was this in this category or was that the other one? The additional description? That was the other one before, okay.
Yeah, I would, I, I will, I will, can I amend my motion before it's seconded? Is that allowed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I amend my motion to include the additional description of job performance that the city manager put forward. And I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, those are motions. Are there second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, two. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move to item A five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, a very similar contract for Mr. Swanson as the development services director. Um, he has been with us now three years. His contract is expiring this month. Without an extension of his contract, it would terminate in one year. So staff is recommending that the City of Hollister renew a, a contract, a new three-year contract. Again, similar terms and conditions as the last one that was previously discussed. There is a six-month severance package associated with it, and there are the three five percent increases due upon execution. I will say this, the, the only slight difference between Mr. Swanson's contract originally and, and Mike Chambliss is that there was not an escalator at all over the past three years with Brian. Brian's, Mr. Swanson's contract was set at like one twenty-six, I believe, and it's, and it's still at one twenty-six. So he has not received an increase over the past three years. So with that said, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution two thousand nineteen dash one fifty-eight, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for Brian Swanson as the position of development services director.
Okay, there's a, thank you very much. Is there any questions, comments? Councilor or Vice Mayor Richmond?
I basically have the same comments. However, we have to find an interim solution, I feel, what's fair. You mentioned there was no escalator the last three years?
He had no escalator in his original contract, no.
I'm not prepared to sign a three-year contract at this time. I wonder if we can legally modify the resolution to give him the upcoming five percent since he hasn't had any escalator and then hold off on the three-year contract until we, we get the same information on the nineteenth. Is there a way to do that?
Councilmember Richmond, I, that, I believe that motion would be appropriate under these circumstances, or allowable, I should say.
Allowed. Obviously, we'll have to hear from the rest of the council, but that, that's what I prefer. I think, I think going three years without a raise is, is, is a long time. And I, I think the situation is a little different from, from Mr. Chambliss, who's been, who'd been with us and, and has had a raise coming also. But, but because his contract is expiring, I would like to make sure that we don't run it out. That's not my intention here. My intention is just do the same, to get the same information. So I will try to make a motion after, after people have their comments, and someone else might make a motion in front of me. I just, I appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just clarification. So you wanted to extend it for him to get the five percent increase?
So his contract will begin immediately, he will get the, essentially the three five percent increases over a period of three years. So this would be a new three-year contract, just like he originally signed, but for the next three years, it would terminate in twenty twenty-two. Um, again, if it's not renewed right after the twenty twenty-two date, he has twelve months, and then it automatically terminates.
But what is the vice mayor proposing?
Oh.
Well, I haven't, I think we need to hear from people first.
All right.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Again, I, I feel bad because you, you hire people and then for no reason that I'm hearing, you don't want to extend a contract. So I'm wondering if the one year is acceptable to the development services director. And I think that's short-term, but if it's something that he accepts, I might be able to go with that. But really, um, the norm has been three years. And the severance package has always been, again, they are at-will employees. We can hire them, we can fire them. Regardless of a contract, correct? They're at-will with a contract. Yeah, so th- those are my comments.
Okay, Bill, just for clarification.
Sure.
Currently, you said the salary is a hundred and twenty?
One, one, it was at, at one twenty-six, I think it was?
One twenty-six, okay. The new one is proposed at one forty-eight five.
Correct.
And upon signing, there would be an immediate five percent.
Correct.
So I'm gonna, as it was mentioned in the previous comments, I'm a little uncomfortable, no, I'm not a little uncomfortable. I'm very uncomfortable about getting a five percent. Why not just list it in there at, at the original starting point? Especially at this point, he does get a bump. It's not going the other way in this one. The other, the last example was coming down in salary. This one is actually going up.
Yes, yes. But again, if I, if I, if I may, I'll, I mean, of course, this is what my role is, right? My role is, is to make sure that our employees get everything they, they can or, and/or deserve. And one of the things I always hear is, is how, how do we compare to the other cities or agencies around us? Well, I can tell you, there isn't a community development or development services director that's being asked to do what Brian is being asked to do on a day-to-day basis, who's making a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Our MAIC director, just at the county, I think, signed for one ninety-five or six, or whatever that was. That job is obviously quite a bit different than what we're asking Brian to do, but I don't think it's any less important. And so one of the things I would say is, again, in order for us to keep, keep competitive and making sure that we have the, the brightest and, and the best talent available, we have to pay these people. It just is the way it is. And I, I don't know how to say it any other way than that. We were fortunate to bring Mr. Swanson in three years ago. We were fortunate to bring him in at a price that we did. But now he has engineering underneath him, he has code enforcement, he has cannabis, he has some of these other things right now that it didn't start out that way. So, and I will, I will leave it at that.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I don't think the, the conversation's about the quality. I think everybody has worked with him, feels probably the same way. I think it's just a conversation, making sure, verifying a few things. And again, I'm gonna go back to the conversation about a review. These are top department heads, and in a closed session meeting, I'd like to hear all the other accomplishments and we go a little back and forth. We've done that in the past with other top-level department heads. And I think it's an important conversation to have, and I think we should have actually had it before we got to this point. Probably would have been a wiser.
Well, again, and with all due respect to the council, I will, I will go in with saying this. My job as the, as the administrator of the organization is to have these folks that work for me, and I work for you. Um, I usually tell everybody who's at-will under contract with us is that every single day you're being evaluated. You wouldn't necessarily be here. Cause let's be honest, I think Mayor has been here through a few of our terminations. It happens when people are not performing. This is not a free ride. So I want to make sure that everybody realizes that we have had terminations, we have had to pay severance. But I think overall, the organization itself, it is in a much better place now than it was when we were going through some of those or dealing with some of the individuals that we have in the past. So, um, like I said, if, if we want to have discussions in closed sessions about my contract and my evaluations and other things get brought up, that's absolutely okay. But I don't necessarily feel comfortable bringing the, our department heads' evaluation, so to speak, into closed session. Again, if you're unhappy with that performance, you need to let me know. And then when you become unhappy with the, the performance of the city manager, there's repercussions for that. So I, I, I just think that there needs to be a true sort of cushion or, or separation between the city manager, council, and staff.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richmond?
I, I just want to make my position clear. I'm not, I'm not intimating that I'm not happy with anybody's performance. Okay, I, I want to make my position perfectly clear. I'm not intimating that, that they, they're not making enough money, or they're making too much money, or, or anything. What I, what I want to do is, I want to get the information together. I want to see it all, all in a package. I want to see these comparisons. I want to get a good idea. I want to look at, I want to look at the other surrounding cities. Morgan Hill, obviously, Gilroy, the ones that are close, both size-wise, and they're, and I understand they're bigger and they, they're different situations. And, and I just want to look at it all, and, and when I'm comfortable with it, I'll certainly make a recommendation. I'm, I'm not trying to be coy. If I was not happy, if I, if I, if I intended not to give them a contract, I would say something else. What I'm asking for is to get the information all, all together. And although I, I trust your judgment, I eventually have to, have to answer to, to people, other employees as well as, not just the voters, I'm not just worried about the voters, it's fair to other employees. You know, say somebody gets a five percent raise. I'm just using an example. I'm not, I'm not using it as a bad example. So when someone gets a five percent raise, yes, a five percent raise for X is the same as a five percent raise for Y. But, but, but when you, when you convert it into dollars, the five percent raise for X and the five percent raise for Y can be awful, an awful lot apart. So Y, depending on how much Y makes, the five percent wa, raise for, for Y may wind up to be a week's pay for X, depending on, depending on how, how different. And we understand they have different responsibility, we understand management. So I understand all of that. And I'm not trying to save thirty days' worth by, by putting it off a month, I assure you. That's why I say, I believe, since these are individual contracts, they're not, they're not written in stone. Uh, if we give, if we give somebody a five percent raise today because they haven't had a raise in three years, and we come back and say, okay, we're gonna give you a, a three-year contract, we don't have to start it out with a five percent raise. Maybe we could start it out with a three percent raise because they've got five percent today. You understand what I'm saying? So, so that's, that's my purpose. My sole purpose is to make sure that I'm comfortable with the numbers. And at this point in time, I just, I'm not comfortable with the five percent, five percent, five percent. And I have worked hard to analyze our compensation compared to others. And, 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 you know, we may not be there, but I'll tell you, we were this far apart, if the public can see it. We were this far apart several years ago. We're a lot closer now, and, and we're getting there. So that's my feeling. I'll let someone else talk, and if not, I'll try and put something together that makes some sense.
Okay, Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, I just want to support what the vice mayor is saying. Um, it's not personal, but we keep hearing that it's at-will employees. And, but they do have a contract, and I think that we can't just fire somebody without them breaching the contract likewise.
No, that's, actually, the city manager can have a really bad day and, and terminate. We give what's called a ten-day, uh, we put him on administrative leave for ten days, and that gives us enough time to take care of the paperwork, and, and basically, they're done. That's the agreement they're signing, essentially. The, the only difference is, is that if I do that to them as an at-will employee, we pay the severance package. If they do something to, to, in, in.
So that would be, it would be disputed. It would be the severance package, okay. So that, and then I want to say that it's, yeah, it's not that we're, or that I would say that, it's not that I dislike anybody's services they provided, but I do feel a little hesitant as well. And if there's other council members that have questions, or I don't think it's an unreasonable request just for to look into that, um, do some comparisons. So I would support that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Lenore?
A final comment. Um, so we have another department head running multiple departments. Uh, we used to retain a public works director. They weren't cheap. Now we have Brian who works closely with Danny Hillstock. I believe that is stamp they're using now. I'm not sure if Brian's public works.
We don't really have a public work, but, but engineering.
Okay, so Brian runs engineering on, on top of development services, which is a huge job in itself. I didn't hear him whining when we threw code enforcement at him either. This is an employee that takes what's given to him and doesn't complain. These are the kind of employees that you want. Code enforcement's not easy. He took it without any comment. So again, a department head running multiple departments, I have to respect that. I also like to take the city manager's recommendation that we pay him for, um, to heart. So I really think that the contract should be three years, shouldn't just dangle to one year. And I do believe that he is worth that wage running those multiple departments and live a public works director. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer?
Um, I just want to say that I agree with Councilwoman Lenore. Mr. Swanson does multiple, multiple jobs. Um, I think he's overly qualified for any position in this city. And I do believe that we should go with a three-year contract with a five, five, and five because an at-will employee, like our city manager said, can get fired at any time. None of the other employees who are in a union can be fired like that. They have the union to back them up. These people do not have a union to back them up. So I, I am all for the contract. I am for a three-year contract and a five, five, and five percent increase over the next three years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Okay. I think we have a speaker card now.
Elliot?
Speaker.
Speaker. Um, Elliot Salinas, thank you. Good afternoon or good evening, council members. What I am not comfortable with is the fact that we bring in talented people. And now you're putting these individuals in a situation where they don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. And if there's a better offer and more, and the community is out there paying more than we do. We have very competent, as Council Spencer, Spencer said, overqualified young man who does a lot for this community and for this city. He's out there in meetings. He never fails to be out there. He's accessible to everybody. You all up there know that. He's accessible to it. In three years, this man has done a lot. And it's disrespectful to the position of the city manager to not to take his word that this person is valued and deserves this. Three years is, goes by quick. I can't believe it's already been three years that Mr. Swanson has been here. I think I just, I figured I just met him a year ago or two years ago, and he's been here three years already. Do not sit up there and give the impression to the other employees that you do not value them because that's what I'm hearing right now.
Okay, thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I, I make my point because I'm a pretty blunt person, I think. I think I'm known for that. I don't know how we get from a point of me saying, "I'd like to see some more information concerning the rates" to say, to move that to say we don't value our employees. If we were running private industry, the first thing I would be saying is, "What is the competitive rate?" I mean, I don't get to put any of this money in my pocket and walk home with it. We have to pay, we have to pay everybody. We have to pay for everything we do. And I'm not trying to get anybody on the cheap, I assure you. I've asked for thirty or forty days, whatever it is, to the nineteenth, close to the fifty days, to be very frank with you. I've asked for fifty days only because we're, we're gone in July. If it was up to me, we wouldn't be gone in July. You heard that speech. But we are gone in July, so I can't, I, we can't do anything in July. If, if we were here, I would say, "Bring it back in a week or two weeks," but we're not here. There's no, there's no inference here that they're not worth the three-year contract. The simple, the simple issue is, all I said is, I would like to see what other cities are doing for severance pay. And I'd like to see what other cities are doing for guaranteed raises. This is, you know, five percent CPI compounded three years, I've complained about this before, is, is, is a raise. It is not just a CPI. And maybe a raise is appropriate, and I feel we should pay people for what they do. I just can't, I just, these are very important positions. I, I just don't think we, I can, I can take them, although I respect the city manager and often agree with him, more often than not, I think. I think I, I have to satisfy myself. And to satisfy myself, I need that information. I, I just can't work in a black hole, is what I call it, with no information about this. I can't compare. I want to compare. I want to see, you know, it may turn out that we're, we're underpaying. I don't know. I want to see the numbers. This is, there's no reflection on their value to say, "Hey, come back and see me in fifty days" because we're not here for thirty days. I can't do anything about that. So I want to make it clear where I'm at and the fact that I'm offering, uh, Mr. Swanson a, I'm going to offer him a five percent raise, hopefully, if I get to make a, I get to make a resolution here. I mean, a, a proposal. It's not an insult. It's, it's saying basically, "We didn't do anything for him for three years. We're gonna do something right now so that while we're waiting, he's not worrying, is there anything coming?" Okay. I mean, I think we owe him that for three years at least, so. Uh, I guess I'm willing to take the heat and, and I'll let somebody else speak, you know.
What I do want to make sure we're, we're clear about, and I think I'm, I'm hearing this as far as making it a personal deal. It's, it's not a personal deal. But you know when it does become personal? Is when we get to the situation where we're in financial, as in the past, where we were seriously having major financial issues in our, in our community. We were laying off people, cutting their salaries, and everybody was just, "Well, what, what do we do?" You know what? That is not fair to our employees. I've always said, from day one, we need to build a community, a city, that can function financially long-term. So we're not, our staff is not worried about being laid off tomorrow when the downturn comes. They know we planned ahead. They know they have a secure job, and they're doing the best they can do, as I would say they do. I caution everybody, whenever you say, "Well, we gotta compare ourselves to all the other surrounding areas." If we're gonna do that, let's also compare the amount of money we get from property tax as the other communities. Cause I can tell you right now, and most people in this community do not understand this. We get a fraction, a fraction of the property tax other communities get. And we've done remarkably well in our community, turned ourselves around. And for me... And for me, I want to make sure we don't get ourselves back in a bad situation. I want to make sure whoever's with us is going to be here, and they know they have a secure job, and we're all going for a common goal. I don't think it's too much to ask, take a little more time to understand some of the numbers. I think it's important. I think it's very important that we're all very clear on what's happening and the performances that are going on. Again, we have some great people working for us, but we all need to make sure we're on the same page. And just to say, or turn it around to, you know, this or that, probably not fair, not only to the employee, but to the community.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes, um, I've just brought it up. For a, uh, planning development manager in Gilroy, their yearly salary is $168,000. Mr. Swanson is making a lot less than that, and even with a 5% raise, that what he would be starting out is still less than $68,000, $168,000 a year. So, we sit up here all the time and talk about getting qualified people in here to stay here in Hollister. And the only way we're going to do that is pay them what they need to be paid. We're not, it's just not the city. The county's having the same problem. We are a training ground. People come in here for a few years, they go to Santa Cruz County, they go to Monterey, they go to Santa Clara County, where they make 10 times what they're making in this town. We talk about economic development. We've got to start doing it. I know it's going to hurt salary-wise, money-wise, but if we do not pay our employees the going rate, and we're still paying them under the going rate of Gilroy, which we want to be compared to Gilroy, if we're still paying $20,000 under, we need to make that up. I say we accept the three-year contract at the going rate of 148.5 with a 5% increase, and that also goes for Mr. Chamberlain. I know we've tabled that, but I'm going to say that I think we're making a big mistake.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, just to point out, I don't think that we can compare just the salaries, um, as well. We need to really look at, uh, detailed as far as like what revenue they're bringing in. So when we bring it back, and if we're going to compare ourselves to other cities, I want to see what amount of revenue they're bringing in and then what they're paying out as, as far as salaries, because I don't think it's an accurate comparison. Um, it just doesn't seem like a smart business decision if we're going to be paying more than we're bringing in. Uh, I'll talk a little bit more about that later on during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2019-158 authorizing the city manager to execute an employment agreement with Brian Swanson as Development Service Director.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
No.
Motion does not carry.
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, give Mr. Swanson an immediate 5% raise. We table the item, um, for a three-year contract until a date certain, beginning the 19th of August 2019. And, um, ask that the city manager put, have the HR, uh, put together the same information concerning, uh, Mr. Swanson's position as we spoke about the airport position. Let me ask the manager a question soon as he's finished there. Do you need any further, would you need any further direction? Do you have the people?
I think, I think what, if I could paraphrase, I think what the council's asking for is a, is a small class and compensation study related to the positions of Development Services Director and the Airport Manager, or Executive Director of the Hollister Airport, um, with other benefits as, as a, as a, as associated with those.
If I, if I make that motion, do you, do you have adequate, um, resources to get that done during the period of time we're talking about?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Question on the, on, one more question for clarification. When does this current contract expire?
Okay, so, yeah, the, the interesting thing about, uh, Mr. Swanson's contract right now is, is again, we're in that fourth and quote, and quote-unquote, "final" year. So, um, well, I'll have a discussion with Brian, um, after the meeting and, and come up with something that is amenable to him. But essentially, what this last 12 months does in the event that the city council doesn't approve an extension of his contract, it's kind of like a severance period of time, right? He has a year. He knows that he is not going to be renewed, and so he'll be looking for a new job during that year. That's what that 12-month period at the end of the contracts are for. Okay? So, I mean, I don't, I don't get the feeling that he feels that that's the way the council feels about him at this moment, but I did, that's what, that's about. I mean, I hope that's not what he's feeling, because I'm not getting that from you folks. I'm just getting that you want a piece of information that, that I haven't been able to provide you.
I think, in other words, you want to make it clear that his job does not expire on the first.
It, yeah, no, his job.
It's, he's still there for a year, but really, what we're trying to do is see a little more time to get some more information in.
Correct.
I think that's.
How do I need to phrase that motion to make sure that the, that the raise takes effect in the next pay period, or how does it work? Immediate upon, upon approval?
Uh, I, I think the best way to say it, um, Councilman Richmond, is, is the first full period, full, the first full pay period after tonight's meeting.
I'd like to, I'd like to modify my, uh, my motion.
Okay.
To propose a 5% raise effective the first full, full pay period following tonight's meeting, and to bring back, um, uh, the information and proposals, um, on, on August the 19th, which is the second meeting, after we return from the, uh, from the recess, or whatever we're going to call it. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
And I'll second that. Mr. City Manager, if we can just add to the direction that we're comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges, so we're getting a full picture of cities that are comparable to Hollister as much as we can.
We, we have a, Councilman Resendez, in the past, we've kind of had this list of about 12 cities that are comparable to us.
Perfect.
But I can promise you that there's never going to be apples to apples and oranges to oranges.
I understand.
Because that just doesn't work that way. But we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Because we're not organized the same right now.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries? Five oh. Go to item A6.
Hi, Mayor and Council. As HR, we've been asked to bring forth a new job description for the senior planning position. The Planning Department is, has somebody retiring, and we feel that was the best time to, uh, clarify their job position to be more, uh, current to, to today's time. This position is actually funded by the successor agency funds that we receive, uh, from the wound down, wind-down art redevelopment agency. We get, uh, $250,000 a year for administration of the successor agency, which would cover this salary. So, any questions?
Thank you. Just to begin for a second, uh, so, just to be clear, so we're not creating a new position then?
Correct.
You're just clarifying what that position is?
Yeah, we're re, the person that's retiring was program manager under the redevelopment agency. Been having them do, uh, do planning items. Now we want to clarify that position to be a little bit more accurate.
Okay, I appreciate that. I thought this was a whole new position, so thank you for that input. Okay.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
That was my comment, basically, but I want to point out that, uh, this is going to be a position that's going to need, need a lot of, um, overlap time, in my opinion. So I'm going to support immediate hire to, to do that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-159 approving a fully-funded senior planner position in the Development Services Department slash Planning Division and a revised job description.
I'll second.
Is there a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Five oh. We'll go to item A7.
Okay. Now, this one is a new position that we're asking for. The planning staff and, uh, engineering staff have been spending a lot of their time answering phone calls, helping people at the front counter, and distracting the, the current planners and engineers. So we feel that, uh, we need somebody that can be at the front counter, helping them, uh, citizens that come into the position, or come into the, into the department to, uh, make those staff members that, that much more efficient.
Well, let me ask, will this help us get the general plan done? The updated general?
I, the thing I was going to add to is, the department head is here, so I will have to direct those kind of questions towards him.
I would like to hear from the department head.
Good evening. Brian Swanson, Development Services Director for Hollister. The problem we have in the department is that we have, um, two assistant planners and two assistant engineers. And I would say, three hours of their daily work period is, is, is being taken up, going to the counter, answering questions, talking to realtors on the phone, talking about zoning. And so, they're very diligent people, wonderful team members. What they do is many times, they work overtime to catch up on the work that they're, that they have going on. This person will allow staff to focus solely on their day-to-day duties. This is a, a development services technician, so this person is going to be covering really two very important divisions within the Development Services Department. And to answer your question, Mayor Blaskas, the general plan's got to get done. We got to get going on that, and, um, we, we understand the task that's before us. This person will help us answer phones, to take our planners and focus them on reading and writing and getting staff reports done, so.
I appreciate that. And again, I want to make sure, be pretty clear about this. This is probably one of the most important things we can do in the city, getting that general plan done. And if it does make that difference, and we can structure it to make sure that they have more time to do what we need to do, get done, that's a, a good thing.
Yeah, it, it really does. Uh, this, this person will help the department exponentially, and we have a goal. We've got to get this goal done for the council, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I do.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Brian?
Yes.
How are we doing on, um, making sure that we, we get paid for the work that these folks do that contributes to a specific project? Now, I understand, when they're working on the general fund, we, we, we can't, you know, that's for everybody. We, we can't charge anybody. Nor do I expect anybody to sit there with a pad and say, "I just on the phone 10 minutes with, with so-and-so who want to know about zone this. Uh, we got to charge him five bucks."
Yeah.
But, but, but I want to make sure we roll, we roll this, that portion of the, of the time where they're working on things that do not fall under the California Open Records Act, that they are actually giving advice, not just providing information, but giving advice. Want to make sure somehow or not, enough, we roll that into the budget so that when we charge our hourly rate, whatever that is, for people who need specific things, that we make sure we do that. Can we, can, can you just take that under advisement?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll be frank with you, um, currently, right now, we're working with Woldan on a user fee study for the Development Services Department.
Good.
I expect the council to receive that study in October, and you'll see that, uh, a lot of the funds that will be created if the study is, is approved.
Okay.
Will help support staff, uh, staff time in particular, so.
Good, thank you very much.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lenore?
Uh, yes, well, I'm very familiar with this department, and, uh, I guess what I want to say is, you finally aren't going to get it for free, because that's exactly the job that I did. I helped the planners, the zoning, the lock coverage, the flood zone, the seismic zone, the, the appraisers. This is the job I did, and they always appreciated me for this job, but, but then I retired, and they didn't have that anymore. And I know that they had to do a lot of counter work and phone work, uh, that I used to do. Uh, and it is a specialized area. You can't just step up to that counter and not understand general plan and zoning. So it's not so much an entry-level clerical. Uh, but I know that, I think that they were impacted, and they were trying to do the job, but your assistant planner should do counter work, but not all the time.
Yep, no.
And they, and they should do the phone, but not for those menial tasks, and I'm not slighting myself, but there's a lot of general questions that can be answered, uh, via sports services, or, or even better, the, uh, Development Services Technician. I didn't have to do engineering, so that's another component to this job, and, uh, this is, this is something good for the public, because the public wants service when they call. So the day-to-day service, this is what they get out of this person, and it will free up the other planners to, uh, give that time a little more, uh, getting the general plan going, uh, because you do get a lot of phone calls and counter work, so I very much support this additional position.
Thank you. You know what my favorite part of the job is in this, in this job description, is they'll be the official proofreader for the department? So, um, city clerk's office, just.
Hello? How do you think I learned it all? Did I go from secretary to city council? You read a lot.
I tell you. No.
All right. Councilmember Resendez?
Uh, one more comment, please. You ready?
Uh, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Richmond?
When I went to work here as a cons, consultant, uh, on telephone, Councilmember Lenore charged me $75 to stamp my paper, so that I could get, I can get a business license. I still remember it to this day. Thank you. That's my.
It's Californian, that is sheep here.
That's so funny, Marty.
There are no speakers.
Okay, is there, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, the approval of a new, fully-funded Development Service Technician position in the De, Development Service Department.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye. Better hope I don't apply.
Motion carries?
What are you talking about? I might apply.
Motion carries? We're going to move to item, uh, A8.
Okay. Uh, once again, Council, this is another new position, and the reason we're bringing this forward is, in the recent couple of years, uh, we've been ending up with complaints from, uh, different environmental regulatory agencies, or codes, or different policies that, uh, oversee our wastewater, stormwater, uh, our hazardous materials, and we just need somebody that needs to be an expert in that area, keeps us up to date, keeps us looking forward, uh, and that, that's getting to be an essential position, position to keep us from getting any kind of fines or, or things like that. And once again, the department head is here to answer any of those questions that you might have about this position.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to hear from the department head.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
So I, my question would be, obviously, this can be very technical as far as all the different regulations out there from all the different departments. How is a person going to be able to follow all of those if they're not an expert in a certain department?
Well, the good news is, um, I guess the, the primary function and the, the worst culprit is, uh, water, the water board. Uh, we could fill that table right now with binders that the councils and previous councils have agreed to follow all these procedures, um, just off the water board alone. There's a little bit of airboard with the carve and the compliance with the age of the equipment and the generators. Add to that, uh, the stormwater and the drinking water. We got those reports that need to get out. There will be a tech position still to aid this individual and get the water reports out, et cetera. But one of the things that I envision this position being able to do for us, and it's really important in my mind for this, because I've done this for the city already, um, is they're going to be able to be at the, the proposed rule making meetings, and they can comment to the rulemakers on how this is going to affect the city. Many years ago, uh, the FAA was going to do a rulemaking regarding large aircraft, requiring full TSA security level presence for any large aircraft, because they identified them as a terrorist threat, that somebody would be able to capture the plane and then fly it full of fuel into a target. Well, those large aircraft were the Cal Fire tankers and the skydiving plane, and them requiring a full TSA presence would have shut down a business here in the city of Hollister, and it would have greatly complicated matters with Cal Fire. So, the previous city manager sent me to Nevada to make a comment at that rulemaking, and that truly is the greatest show on earth, whenever the federal government has one of those, and I encourage you to attend one of those. But after sitting there for eight hours while people were complaining about the noise, and killing cows, and making chickens not lay eggs anymore, and I swear, all that happened, I got up, and I was able to give them a perspective of what this rule was going to do to the city. And they sat up, after eight hours of testimony, and their eyes were, and they took notes. That rule never came into fruition. I'm not saying that I did that, but I am saying that at least we were part of the process, and we have to believe in that process, and we were able to get that representation made. That, to me, is one of the most important parts of this job, because currently, airboards passing rules, water boards always passing rules, the meetings are in San Luis Obispo, I got a meeting over here, I got a meeting over there. This is a critical function. Add on to the fact, all the stormwater, with the developers, inside and outside, recently we caught two of the outside developments in the county, that on all the paperwork they put down, the city was responsible for everything. Everything. We're going to maintain it, we're going to sweep the streets in the county, we're going to do it all. And the water board said, "Okay, we didn't know anything about it." And luckily, we reviewed it, it was kind of above and beyond, because it was outside the city limits, and we caught it and we fixed it. That's the kinds of stuff that this job needs to do.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and that's what, that really is my question, though, because you are that expert, and I understand that, the airport and some of the other issues, how does a person, a new person coming in, accomplish that, as far as the knowledge level?
I am an expert when it comes to the airport, I am not an expert.
No, I understand, but I'm talking about a person that's going to handle this type of a job for all these different departments.
We need to hire an expert with water.
So, that's, I guess, what I'm looking for, how are we doing this?
And it's in the specs, that they have to have certifications that provide that level of information.
Yeah, we've put some specifications in there to make sure that they have their QSDs and some of the other things, and I think, as Mike was alluding to, also, one of the key things for us is being able to be a little bit ahead of the game on compliance and rules and regs, rather than, you know, at the last minute. Like, for instance, a good example also might be Chromium 6, and I know that Chromium 6 discussions got tabled for a while, but I know they're coming back. And the idea is, is that we need to know, you know, a year in advance when those discussions are going to be had, rather than the day before, and we get a notice of violation, because we've tested in our Chromium 6 levels. I think that, again, this is, this is more a function of really sort of managing than making sure that our reports get out timely, there's somebody that's responsible for doing that, to some extent, and then, if there is technical, technicalities or technical work that needs to be done, that this person could go out and find the right person to do that job and manage that component. I know that we do a lot of the testing in-house, I'm, we're going to probably continue to try to do that as much as we can. It is a huge job, but it's way better to have somebody be focused on that than, rather than having various folks in various departments trying to do it, and make, trying to make sure that we don't get what we call NOVs, or notice of violations, from the various outside agencies.
And again, I agree with you, it makes a lot of sense, I'm just saying, this is going to be a person who's really going to have a lot of knowledge to keep up with all that, as you mentioned, Chromium 6, and we caught that early and so on, airport.
Yeah, and of course, look, the city of Hollister isn't on the cutting edge of creating things, we steal stuff, just, or we borrow stuff from other communities like everybody else. So, where did this one come from? The city of, yeah, this was, basically, the city of San Luis Obispo has this very same person. So, these folks are out there, it's just a matter of getting them.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for that. Any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that the, that we adopt Resolution 2019-161, Resolution City Council, City of Hollister, approve the new fully-funded environmental programs manager position on Management Services Department, Utility Division.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Here's, thank you very much. We'll go to item A9.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This item is a resolution approving the proposed boundary of the Mirabella II subdivision for annexation into Community Facilities District Number Four, which pays for public facility services, such as streets, sidewalks, parks, et cetera. And I don't often get to speak on these ones, so I just want to clarify for the public and for everyone, that when we say annexation, we're not talking about annexing something into the city limits, all of the projects within the CFDs are already in the city limits, and all the proposed projects are already in the city limits, and this is a condition of their approval to annex them into a taxing district. Just for information on this project, the maximum tax for 2018-19 fiscal year is 833 per single-family unit and 634 per multi-family unit on this project. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions?
No.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Would you remind me, which CFD four is what?
CFD four is public services, public facilities and services.
Public facility?
And this project is already in CFD five, it was the forming, forming project for five.
But so is four landscape and lighting, or is?
Uh, yes.
Okay, it's not, it's not police and fire?
It's, it's not police and fire.
Okay, that's what I want to know, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-162, approving the proposed boundaries of Mirabella II subdivision for the annex of territory into CFD Number Four, annexation number 31.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Move to item A10.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Renee Peralas. Tonight, I have before you Resolution 2019-163. This resolution would reject the bids received for the West Gateway Beautification Project, Phase One. In August 2018, the City Council approved the plans and specifications for the project, and on April 26, staff advertised the project for bid, and on June 12, we received two bids. The engineer's estimate was approximately 1.5 million, however, the lowest bid came in at 3.3 million, with the second bid at 3.5 million. Staff recommends that the council approve the Resolution 2019-163, rejecting the bids and directing staff to have the project reevaluated. However, if council would like staff to move forward, you can reject this resolution and direct staff to return with the resolution to award a contract to the low bidder. Do you have any questions?
Okay, is there any questions? Vice Mayor Richmond?
Yeah, because my short-term memory is, doesn't work very well anymore. I have a general remembrance of exactly, of, I have a general memory, it's not exactly, that's the problem, of what was involved. I want to know, did this particular bid include the roundabout at the, at the?
At graph, yes.
At graph?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. I was afraid you were going to say yes. I'm sure a lot of people in the audience, and members of the public, are going to say we don't do a good job of preparing the estimates. I just want them to know, I'm going to make a statement in general, we saw it the other, we saw it a couple of weeks ago, when we had the sewer lift, the economy is cooking like crazy, and although a million bucks may sound like a lot of money to some people, if you're in the, if you're in the construction business right now, this minute, a million bucks isn't looking like a big, big, huge project, it's looking like a, kind of a medium, small project. And so, the price has doubled on our sewer lift station, the price came in almost exactly twice, I believe, what our estimate was, and now we're here. And I'll be damned if I know what to do about it, I'll be very honest with you. I'm not, I don't have a good idea. If we reject it, that means we don't get it, we desperately need some, we desperately need some, some, something over on the west side to improve that, that gateway.
And we're recommending reevaluating the project, not, not discarding it completely, but just reevaluating.
That's, that's your recommendation?
What would happen?
With the rejection, yes, to direct staff to reevaluate the project.
And what does reevaluation mean? Does that mean, look at it, to, what to take out to get it under budget?
Well, I mean, and part of it is, is that, let's see, I think probably mostly reducing the scope.
Yeah.
If you'll recall, the roundabout and the project basically goes from the bridge, essentially, to the front of J.B. Howard's property. So, I think it's just maybe narrowing the scope, to some extent, there was a lot of work that was being done on the curve or the radius there, and maybe we look at not removing that super elevation, or, I mean, there's, we just, we know that we, I can't come here with a straight face and say, "I think it's a good idea for you to ward the bid at 3.5 million,"
No.
because I just really don't know where to get the other two and a half million dollars from. I wish I had that answer. So, there's a couple of things that we would do, we'd probably first look at how to re-scope the project, if it's possible to do, and then again, then look for other sources of funding that may be appropriate for us to use in this particular case.
Do you, do you believe, and then, between you and the staff, do you believe you could also come up with some recommendations to improve the overall view, look of the gateway by adopting some ordinances concerning, concerning screening of certain areas and certain kinds of businesses, that, that, that don't look very well, very well?
I think we, I think we absolutely could. Here's one of the interesting things, and Renee may be able to help me out on this. One of the big components is, obviously, the actual roundabout itself, it's a hugely, that's a hugely expensive piece of quote-unquote traffic, or design work that needs to be in there. One of the other aspects of it is, is that, obviously, the intersection is controlled, right? There's a signal there now.
Right.
Okay, maybe we eliminate the roundabout component of it, and we do the beautification on the rest of it. Those are the types of things that I think we still have to start thinking about a little bit. I understand, look, nobody's more, people that were here that day will know that there's nobody more disappointed about not getting this done than me.
Right, I believe.
But, I think, at, in any case, what I'd love to do is be able to continue some of the work that's been done out there already, and complete as much of that project as we can. Because I believe that, as a gateway into our community, we, you know, Mary Paxton's done a lot of work on the signs and everything else that we're trying to do, especially along the frontage there, next to the industrial ponds, I believe it's a huge opportunity to do exactly what you're suggesting, is just doing that beautification project. I'd love to be able to come back to you with something that can get that done, with the one and a half million dollars that we thought we had.
I would also ask the City Council to adopt, if they give you that, if someone makes a motion to give you that instruction, to adopt, ask the staff through you, through the city manager, to look at ordinances that we can adopt, that will not be very expensive to the people who are out there, for instance, the junkyard, or whatever you call it, to make sure there's a basic screening from the, from the roadway. I see it in other, in other communities where they put up the weave that you put in the fence, you know what I'm talking about. It's not very expensive, but if you, if you fairly delve it out, it has a good effect overall, so I'll just throw that out through you, through this speech to the rest of, to the rest of the City Council, thank you.
Councilmember Lenore?
I very much agree. I was really excited about the West Gateway beautification. I could do without the roundabout, if we could do the rest of the gateway, and we do need to screen the old Del Certo property, I don't know who owns it now, but it's, what's his name? Vince? So, that would be a good screener, and I think J.B. Howard, when he develops, that's going to obviously complete the public right-of-way improvements that we so desperately need for that connectivity. Yeah, I'd like to see the traffic calming, I, the West Gateway should be tended to, it's a major gateway. The South Gateway, yeah, we have the traffic going at the Pinnacles National Highway, but the West Gateway's very visual, and it's, and it's, and it's time, so if we could, I don't have a problem with that traffic light, yeah, I know, the roundabouts, maybe they look nicer, but I don't see a big backup at that light. So, I'd like to proceed, if the rest of the council, as Marty stated, is to, don't do that, and then do the beautification part. I was sad, too, I want, I want this done, it's time, it already looks better, but it's got a long way to go, and if we have to cough up some funding, then so be it. Thank you.
Can I recommend, and I'm seeing this happen throughout, I'm in the construction industry too, and I've seen this on projects all over the place, a lot of times, you'll get your answers just by having a sit-down meeting with each of these, the top two, and ask them. What could we have done, what, why is it so much higher? What do you recommend? And you'd be surprised, and so often, we'll have a set of plans, and give a number that's just outrageous, and the owners will come back and say, "Why is it so outrageous?" Well, basically, say, "Because you made it outrageous." And here's, you know, here's the question, "Why do you have this, why are you doing this," so on and so on, and leave a meeting that's 30%, 40% lower, and they're shocked by this. I really recommend having those conversations, especially in today's competitive bidding world, because I know I've had some conversations with some of these major generals that do this roadwork, and they say it all the time, "You guys make your projects so much more expensive than they have to be, you just need to sit down with us and understand what's going on out there in today's world." And I really, I think it's probably the better answer, and then come back and, "What is the new vision for beautification of that area?" It can be much cheaper, and probably, at the end of the day, it probably looks better, so.
Councilmember Resendas?
I'd like to echo the same sentiments as my fellow councilmembers, I am extremely disappointed to not see this project go through. Nothing has been done there for a number of years, I don't know if anything's been done since they put in the light, but even I agree that the price of the bid is way overpriced. I like the suggestions that the mayor and Councilwoman Spencer, sorry, Councilwoman Lenore had suggested, maybe we can look at some different options. I'm glad to see that the complete streets is going through, we just approved that earlier, maybe we can look at tying in that to this. And then, what's the status of the sign? We've got a sign paid for and built that's supposed to be installed over there, where are we with that, and how is that going to tie in to what we do?
I apologize, I don't, I'll have to get back to that, I'll email you folks tomorrow or something, I'll get with Mary and find out what the status of that is.
Um, I'm sorry. Well, and then lastly, I just want to say that Mary has been instrumental in getting grants and helping us to improve the west side, she's leaving, it's going to be a huge loss. I'm curious as to who is writing grants, who is going to continue to write grants, if we get some more information, because I want to know, who on our staff is writing grants, how many grants are we getting approved, what the outcome is, because sometimes we hear that we're going for grants, and then we never find out what the outcome was of that. So, I'd just like to get some more information about who's writing grants, what the outcome of is of them, and the number of grants, but, yeah, I'd like for us to leave here with some, not just completely saying no to the project, but coming back with some more options if we can.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Okay, is there a motion?
So, I'll go ahead and proceed with Resolution Number 2019-163, rejecting all the current bids for the West Gateway Beautification Project, Phase One.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, move to item A11.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, and Your Honor, I'm looking for a supplemental appropriation of $12,173. I was surprised to learn the other night, when the fire chief was up here, and you bought a wired water truck, and then you surplus the water truck, that the water truck we had couldn't be used to go, a primary response, because it didn't have the right equipment in it. So, this puts that equipment in it, so that's why we're here.
Any, any questions?
I have a question. So, does that mean this will be the water tender, that we're going to replace the one that, no? Is this going to be a water tender?
Yeah.
The big one's leaving, are we going to need another water tender still? Is that off-subject?
No, no, you're right.
I'm just not qualified to answer that question, because I'm not your fire chief.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the idea is that the department, the fire department, will ultimately have, again, two water tenders, this will ultimately be a third, but at least, between we get those, right, before we get the other two, this one will be accessible for the fire department, and will have the lights and the communications that's necessary for the department.
So, we'll ultimately have three?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is not the $251,000 water tender, is that what we're saying? That seems like a bargain to me.
Yeah.
This is actually a water tender that Mike's, is in Mike's operations on a regular basis, but in an emergency, they can use it.
Right. Any speaker cards?
There are no speakers.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Resolution 2019-164, Resolution City Council, City of Hollister, appropriating $12,173. appropriating $12,173 from the General Fund Reserves to equip the water truck with emergency equipment and safety lighting. And just a question, do we have to do an individual poll on this, because it's money moving out of the reserves? Do we have to actually poll the, we have something in our municipal code about polling people when we do an appropriation?
I would ask the...
Okay. Thank you. The roll call.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Resendez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Aye.
Council, or, sorry, Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
Do you have any other missed vote?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Move to item A twelve.
Good evening, Brian Swanson, Development Services Director for the city of Hollister. This is an exciting agenda item. It's been a long time coming, in about a year, we've been working on this with our cell tower negotiator. Would like to just kinda go over the staff report, so the public can kind of hear what the deal is, if that's okay? Okay. The city has an active lease with Crown Castle for a wireless communications facility at a cellular tower at 420 Hill Street. So, it's at the, it's at, it's top of the hill, by the old engineering department. The City Council approved Amendment Seven to the Professionals, Professional Services Agreement with Development and Public Finance. DPF is a contractor we work with, with CFDs, they've done a lot of great jobs for us. They also offer cell tower negotiations, and so, we felt that it was necessary to have someone in the industry to actually help us negotiate cellular tower deals. So, on February 4th, 2019, the city and Crown Castle came together with somewhat of an approved deal to lease the site for 50 years. The contract, our, our subconsultant, Steve Seal, listed the cellular tower on his auction site, and we received three bids. The low bid was 850,000 from Lease Advisors, the second was 925,000 from Everest Infrastructure Partners, and the top bid was 1.4 million dollars from Crown Castle. Again, this is a 50-year lease, so we, we own, we own the tower, we own the land, it's simply a 50-year lease with Crown Castle. They are paying us upfront, 1.4 million dollars, and if they expand their area up to 200 square feet, so if they add 200 square feet to their tower site, and bring in more carriers for their tower, the carriers that they bring in, the additional ones, we get 50% of the revenue that those new tenants will generate at the site. That is, if they expand the site and add tenants. The, the fee that we will be paying the consultant that brokered the deal is 84,000. So, the net revenue that the city will receive is 1.36, 1, 1,000,316,000. So, you know, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Get the check to the bank, quick.
Yeah.
Brian wants credit for that revenue?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Your, your numbers, your numbers are looking better.
There you go.
It's a good deal, and, you know, we've had a, we've had a, a long-term lease with Crown Castle, and the lease expired, and so we've been, we've been on a holdover pattern. And so, the one thing that I'll say is, patience is always key in everything, and Crown Castle has worked well with our negotiator, and this is a great deal for both sides, to be honest with you, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Vice Mayor Richmond?
Brian, sounds good. I just have a question.
Sure.
Since I don't know exactly the way the lease reads, do we need to put some money aside for future maintenance, for instance, on that tower? Are they gonna do all that?
They, they take over, yeah.
Including, including the, the structure, the actual structure?
That's right.
Not just the electronics?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, there's one thing that we all, we should, as society and technology moves forward, cell towers are getting smaller and smaller, and so, this is a good opportunity for the city to, to, to broker a good deal with what we have up there, so.
Sounds good. I just wanna make sure, in case we gotta take some of this money, put it aside for future, future maintenance, to make sure it meets the lease requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
There's no speaker cards, unless there's any questions for Jennifer Jackson, who's here on behalf of the lessy entity. But if not, there's no speakers.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2019-165, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of a ground lease and a ground lease with CCTMILLC, Crown Castle, for a cellular tower, tower at 420 Hill Street.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adjourn in honor of Independence State, July 4th, 2019.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Don't forget the fly-in. The fireworks.[1606.13]